The following is a local resident producer's program. The program contains the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to another edition of I on Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Hens, and my guest co-host on this edition is Dan Rylandz, the former editorial page editor for Knight Ridder newspapers. Some of you may remember those, and others may not.
It's now gone.
And has been for a little while. But in any event, Dan is here tonight filling in for Tony Palmieri. Since Tony is one of the candidates for the Oshkosh Common Council, he has recused himself from conducting interviews during the campaign season. That being said, we have five candidates who are seeking a seat on the Oshkosh area school district's Board of Education. One of them is our guest this evening, Karen Bowen, to my left. Karen is seeking reelection. She is one of two people whose terms are up this time around. Don Sween, of course, served one term, has decided not to seek reelection. So there will be one new face on the Oshkosh area Board of Education come April. So that being said, welcome to the show.
Thank you very much for having me.
And you're going to be in the first half hour. We'll be joined by Michelle Monti in the second half hour, and lots of things to cover. Primary elections on February 20th. One candidate will be eliminated, then four will advance. The general election is on Tuesday, April 3rd. So, you know, you've served so many years in public service here in the community. I'm sure a lot of folks know who you are and, you know, what your background is. But, you know, our community has grown, and for people who don't remember or who are newcomers to the area, why don't you tell us a little about yourself and why you're doing this crazy thing again?
People do keep asking me that. I'm a longtime resident of UW, of Oshkosh. I work at UW-Oshkosh, so I don't actually live at UW-Oshkosh, although it seems that way some days. I came here because of the university, and it's a, it's a common story. People come to the university and then never leave. They like the community a lot. I'm married to someone who is from Oshkosh, Ted, and my children are Ann and Ed. Both of them have graduated from universities around Ann in Oshkosh and Ed in South Carolina. And all three of them are products of the Oshkosh area schools. And I got involved when my kids, actually when my kids were in preschool. I got involved with the preschool and carried, started carrying that through to, when they went to Webster. They are Webster Stanley and Oshkosh North graduates, Ed and Ann. And I always felt that it was important for me to be involved with the schools. And as they grew older, I began to think of, see some things that were happening with the school district as a whole, and the school board that I thought, gee, I really, I really think that I could help out. And my background is in educational administration at the higher education level. I've never worked in a K through eight school, or nine through 12 for that matter. But I've always tried to keep in close touch with the schools. For example, for the last four years, I've been a mentor at North High School in the Big Brothers and Big Sisters After School Mentor Program. I volunteer whenever I can. So I have a lot of experience on different boards and groups in Oshkosh, and I'm very much attached to this community and very proud of it.
Okay. And you've served how many, I know that you got voted out of office once upon a time and then got reelected.
Yes, I did.
You know, I think maybe the next time around or whatever.
Yeah.
But how many years total, Karen, have you served on the school board?
Nine.
Nine?
Ending my ninth year, end of my third term here.
Okay. Well, certainly, one of the biggest things going on in this district right now is the facilities plan.
Yes.
It's a 10-year plan.
Yes.
And involves the closing of schools and possibly the building of another school at some point down the road. You know, this, this is really something that has the community abuzz.
Yes, indeed. It certainly does.
And it is the centerpiece of this campaign. You know, how do you feel about the decision to, for example, send Sunset students to Reed in '07 and '08, and then make Tipler a full-time middle school again, which it was when I went there?
You went to Tipler? Okay, okay. I think that's a good decision. I think that it will be good for the Sunset kids to be back on the track where they belong, to North High School, for them to have been bussed all the way to Tipler for a long time, was, was kind of a problem. That's, that being said, I also do remember that I was on the board when we had hoped that we would be, we would be able to build another Sunset. And that didn't happen. And I'm really, I'm sad about that. I'm actually sad about closing the smaller schools. On the other hand, and that's, that's the whole thing here. This is, this is, none of this is black and white. There's no right and wrong. We, we have to make a decision that will be the best that it can be. But the smaller schools, while they have some real advantages, they have, they're welcoming, they're, they're, they're small, there's a tight-knit community, they have served for many years as the kind of community centers for, excuse me, for their various communities, they're no longer efficient and effective in the 21st century. And that's really what we're going for here, is 21st century education, as opposed to the model that we had when you were in school and when I was in school. It isn't that much different. So we really need to be looking at something, something different.
Well, I want to get Dan in here in just a second. But one of the problems is that schools have sort of fallen into disrepair. And there are different, no pun intended, schools of thought on how that's happened. What, in your opinion, has, has caused that to be the situation that we find ourselves in?
Well, first of all, when you, when you have a building of any kind, whether it's your home or anything, you really need to keep putting money into it in order for, in order to keep it at, at a level that you would like it to be. There are many, many things that I would like to do to my own home that I'll never be able to do because I can't afford it. And that's true of schools as well. There are many things that we should be doing to schools that we can't afford. What we, what we were remiss in, and I don't, speaking of different schools of thought, before I was on the board, there was, there was a really big problem with maintenance in this district. And the reason for that has always been that simply, we simply don't have enough money. And everybody always says, you can't, you don't need money to educate kids. Well, to some extent, you do. Because in order to keep the buildings up, in order to make things as efficient as they should be, it does take funding, and we all know that, again, when we look at our own homes. But as, as Dennis Kavanaugh and I and a couple of other people came on the board, we really began to work at raising the amount of money that would be available for maintenance each year. Now, capital improvements is another matter. For that, there are, there are two things that have happened there. One is that, if you remember, we added some, and I must say, not terribly efficient additions to a couple of schools in, prior to 1993, before the spending, the revenue caps and the state funding of education formula came in in 1993. And what happens there, what happened there is that there are two things. One is, Oshkosh has always been a community that prides itself on penny, penny pinching, pinching pennies. And I, I don't have any problem with that, except that there comes a time again when you, when you can't do that. You have to stop doing that. So prior to 1993, where we were able to raise the revenue, raise taxes, in other words, to build those three additions, the one at Washington, that some, I regret to say, refer to as the Tin Gym, the addition at Oak Lawn, and the addition at Webster Stanley, the elementary addition at Webster Stanley, that Dan knows so well. And the, after that, we couldn't do that anymore because we couldn't, we couldn't raise, we had a very limited amount that we could raise the levy each year. So then you have to go to referendum. And that's one of the things that we're going to be facing now. If we want to do anything major, we're going to have to do referendum down the road. I don't know how far down the road, but it'll depend on the plan, how the plan comes out. And again, going back to the analogy of my own home, I can't generally afford to do what I would like to do with my own home unless I go out and I either save tons and tons of money, which is very difficult to do in a public setting like this, or I borrow it.
Sure.
And I may borrow on my home equity. Well, we don't have that exactly in the schools, although we sort of do because we can do referendum. So that's really how it happened. And I, and I think over the course of the years, every time, Mr. Becker made a comment the other night about the majority of the board voting against, I think that's what he said. I was kind of shocked by that, voting against things to improve the buildings. I, I don't remember that the majority of the board ever voted against that. We need, you know, we need, we have miles and miles of roofs, for example. And every time the district came up with a way to pay for those, to, to work on those so they didn't leak anymore, my recollection is that the majority voted in favor of that.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
I have some short answer questions.
Oh, okay.
Some are kind of goofy. I'm asking every school board candidate. What's the last book you read for fun?
Uh, let's see, the last book I read for fun? Actually, it's Doris Christopher's autobiography. You know who Doris Christopher is?
No, don't. Tell me.
She's the founder of The Pampered Chef.
Okay.
So that's, I've just finished that.
Okay, good. Second question. Do you support volunteer term limits for elected officials?
Volunteer term limits? Or...
Well, for example, two people on the council, both Bill Castle and Shirley, put self-imposed term limits. And you've been on here nine years. I'm wondering if you've thought at all about volunteer term limits, because there is no law that forces term limits.
Right. I wouldn't, I don't have an opinion one way or the other. I think it's, I think it's, so I'm sorry for not answering yes or no. But I don't really have much of an opinion on that, because I think for some people, that's, that's, you know, for them, that's a good thing to do. That's what they want to do. For others, there may be reasons why they want to stay on for a term, one or more terms. So yes and no.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. I want to turn to No Child Left Behind.
Okay.
NCLB for the acronym.
Yes.
It's now five years old.
Yes.
Congress is beginning a reauthorization in January. And it's a very complex bill, but I want to concentrate on two points.
Okay.
And I wanted you to give me your impact that you think it has on the school system. Now, the first one I want to ask about is, all states must develop tests that address the curriculum standards, and all students in grades three through eight must be tested annually, I think for math and reading. How is that going?
Uh, how does it, I'm, I'm gonna stick to how it does. Impact the district?
Yeah, how's it impacted?
I think both negatively and positively. I think, I'm, one thing that I don't like about No Child Left Behind is that it, it is geared toward testing. And there's a lot more that goes on in school than testing, lots more. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a big proponent of relying only on testing, and that's what that law does. But on the other hand, the, the fact that we have to have, have standards has forced all schools to take a look at where we are and what we are doing, and do we have, is everything aligned? You know, is third grade aligned with fourth grade, and actually all the way up through, in this particular case, you're talking through three, through eight, through eighth grade, and then beyond. So that's been a really good thing for the district, and we were doing that in the first place, you know, before that came along. But that really forced us to take a look at that.
Here's a comment by Charles Murray, the author of Bell Curve. He said, "NCLB is a disaster for federalism." Quote, "It pushes classrooms towards relentless drilling, not something that inspires able people to become teachers or makes children eager to learn. It holds good students hostage to the performance of the least talented at a time when the economic future of the country depends more than ever on the performance of the most talented." Do you agree or disagree with that?
Well, I, I agree with part of it. I think, I agree with the piece, as I said before, I'm, I really have some issues with standardized tests, and you know, that's it. Because No Child Left Behind doesn't look at anything else. It doesn't look at whether we're returning good citizens.
Okay.
It doesn't look at creativity. It looks at, how did you do on these standardized tests? So I think that's, I think that's a problem. The flip side of that is, though, while I do agree that, I would agree with Mr. Murray, that we do want to be very certain that our goods, our very best and brightest, get what they need, because they probably will be the leaders. I think, I think it's important that, the one good thing that No Child Left Behind does is it, here's, here's where the middle is. It tries to bring up the bottom to the middle. And that's what a lot of concentrate on, is taking those kids who are having a lot of trouble, for whatever reason, and, and bringing them up.
But it doesn't help the gifted and talented at all, does it?
Not, probably not. No. Oh, certainly not. Absolutely not. You're right. And that's, that's what I, you know, that, because those are the people who are creative. Those are the people who have lots of opportunities, or could have lots of opportunities.
One more question. Okay. The law also does not exclude children with disabilities.
Right.
In content, and in fact, they are supposed to be evaluated the same way as all children. Now, if you, if you, if you label someone special ed in your school system, or reading disability or whatever, because they have a reading disability, they can't keep up. The federal law comes along and says, well, yeah, but you have to be tested and held accountable to the same scores as the regular teachers, and your school will be punished if, if you're below the score. Is that fair for kids who are special ed?
Absolutely not. It's not fair for the schools either.
No, of course not.
And it isn't quite, it isn't quite as nasty as it sounds, because there are, you can come up with alternative tests, alternative measuring devices. And for example, a child who's in a wheelchair, who is, who can't, who can barely do anything at all, there are, there are some things that you can test that child on.
No, I understand that the real severe disabilities are excluded, but the rest aren't.
But yeah, you do have to, you have to report on everybody. That's true.
Okay, one more, and then I'll get behind you. Speaking of the gifted and talented, a Dane County Circuit Judge recently ordered Wisconsin DPI to prepare specific rules for school districts to use in identifying gifted and talented students. Does the Oshkosh school district have such a plan?
Yes.
Okay.
We do indeed. Have had for a number of years. That was the only yes I could give you.
That was a really short one.
I'm out of here for it.
Thanks, Dan.
Back to the facilities plan, Karen. We've heard that doing nothing is, is not an option.
Right.
It's an option, but it's not a good one, and it's not a practical one, probably. You know, we've, we've got disparity in enrollments. We've got buildings in, in disrepair. We've also got this issue of socioeconomics that we're hearing a lot about. If you are reelected to the board and you're faced with the school closures, as, as I think the district is going to be, what, what's the criteria that you would use to, to make those tough decisions about which schools to close?
I would rely on the Public Management Partners Report, for the most part. I think what we've done with that report is, is a good thing in that we've taken it, taken pieces of it. They have used national standards. And that's, that's what we needed. We needed somebody to come in here and give us some, here's some, some objective national standards. That's what they've done. Now, we've taken it back to our district and localized some of those things. These are the, some of the things that are important to Oshkosh. And so in doing that, I think we now have a pretty good base, although not completely, we're not, probably not done yet with the, with the base if we're making those decisions. So I would, that's, those are the standards that I would look at for the most part. Then the other piece is the educational standards. What, I maybe even said it on this program. You could, you can have a school in a, in a forest. You can have, you can, you can write on a, on a flat rock. But that doesn't prepare you for the 21st century. We are, that's where we're living, folks. We're not, we're not living back in the, in the 60s anymore, which, even though those were fun times, we're not there anymore. So we really do need to make sure that the buildings that we, we keep, the buildings that we build, whatever we're going to do, are buildings that will educate our children for the 21st century.
Okay. What about this issue of socioeconomics? Because, you know, some people are out in the community saying, you can't make decisions based on that. Others are saying, yeah, you really need to, because it does level everything out. And students have a tendency to do better when they're associated with and paired up with, if you will, students of somewhat higher means. You know, what does Karen Bowen, candidate for the school board, think about that?
I think that we are, we should be using educational standards, as I said, to make decisions. And, but, part of educational standards, a good piece of, maybe not, I shouldn't say a good piece of, a piece of it, not, not the whole enchilada. But socioeconomics is a piece of the educational picture. It always has been, and it always will be. Not only is it, is it good for children of lower socioeconomic status to associate with higher, it's also, it also goes the other way. The world is not, the world is no longer white, middle class, upper middle class. We may all aspire to be upper middle class, but that's not what the world is. And if you want to be a success in the world, it's my fervent opinion that you really need to be able to work and live with all kinds of people. We have seen again and again evidence that shows us that the communities in the past that were all white, like Oshkosh, for example, will no longer be that way. The whole, you know, the whole Fox Valley is changing. The state of Wisconsin, and that's a good thing. Diversity is a, is a good thing. Diversity is an exciting thing. So we need to prepare our kids to live in that kind of a world. So that's, to me, that's what the socioeconomic piece is. It should not drive the whole package in any way, but it certainly needs to be a part of it.
Okay. Communication for a number of years between the school district, the school board, and the public was, was really lacking. And I think in, in the last few years, anyway, at least from my perspective, it really seems to have improved tremendously. And I think you guys are to be commended for that. Do you think that it's where it needs to be now? Do you think there's still some room for improvement? What are your thoughts on that?
There's always room for improvement in communications. There's no question that without good communication, the district can't achieve what it needs to. And this, because we really need the parents and the, the whole community to be behind the schools. I can't think of any entity, well, I don't know, maybe my husband would argue with me since he's on the Parks Board, but I can't think of any entity that speaks more about what a community is than its schools, and what it does for its kids. And point one, we need to make sure that people understand that, especially people who's, who don't have kids in the schools, who, or who are, whose kids are done with schools. It's still important for them to support the schools. Secondly, we need, we have found again and again, there's all sorts of research that shows that when there's involvement in the schools, not just, not community involvement, but in particular parental involvement, the kids perform much better. So we really do need to make sure that we communicate that to the parents and to the, to the community. You know, Webster's done some really neat things with, working with their, their neighborhood. That makes a huge difference for how people perceive that school.
Sure. Well, and I think part of the communication problem is, is the public itself.
We have, yeah, we have an obligation. We as the public.
Right. And, you know, when people don't have, I mean, if I didn't do this show or wasn't interested in what's going on in the community and local politics, I probably wouldn't have a clue what's going on in the school district. Because, you know, I pay my taxes, and part of that, a big chunk of that goes to the school district, but I don't have any kids in the school system.
Right, right.
And so, and I think that there's a lot of people out there like that. And, and yet, the only time that you probably hear from them is when there is a referendum, and that kind of thing.
Or a tax increase.
Well, and that's all kind of tied in.
Kind of, kind of, it goes together. Yeah, that's right.
But speaking of referendum, you know, we've heard different figures on, on a possible referendum, possibly as much as 50 or 60 million. I mean...
Possibly. But that, that, we're not, we're not there yet. That, that's one of the phases of this plan that is not there yet. We, I, we have, I think the decision has pretty much been made that we will certainly not be able to have the entire 10-year plan out in a month. I mean, essentially, March 10th is the original date, in a month. So we will be, we will have some more pieces of it out by March 10th, but I'm not sure we'll have that part out yet. That is one of the more sticky issues to deal with. How big a referendum? What should we be doing? What is the community willing to support in terms of new buildings?
What are your thoughts on that? What do you think the community is willing to support?
I think we have to be very careful. I think we had two very fine referendum, Traeger, the Traeger-South Park, and then the Jefferson Merrill Referendum, that's how I refer to them, referendum that were, that were broadly and widely supported by the community. And then we had the 2001 referendum, which people planning it, and people, people who know how to know about planning, planning referendums, said that, you know, if we try to do something for each school, that can be very helpful. That did not work.
The board was split on that, too, weren't they?
The board, and the board was split. But I'm not so sure that the board will always be somewhat split. I don't think there will, I think there may never be a board that's seven, oh.
But that was a pretty close split.
That was, that was a pretty close split. That's right. And, and then on top of it, I, I really do believe that since it was after 9/11/2001, that people were very nervous. The uncertainty of the time was just too much. It was all too much for people. And so I'm hoping that this time, I certainly hope we don't have another disaster like that. That would be, we don't, can't deal with that. But the other thing is that I think the, the district needs to, needs to have a, a really good plan in place that, that makes sense, not just for what is needed for individual buildings, which I think is probably the mistake we made the last time, you know, looking back on it, and being part of that, that planning process. I think if we, you know, if we have an overall vision and goals, the 10-year plan, and how new stuff would fit into that, I, I think that's important. And to, again, to let, make sure that people understand that it's 21st century that we're talking about.
I have a time to ask a fee question?
Sure. Go right ahead.
Last November, Oshkosh voters voted down the garbage fee bill. Almost, did you vote against it?
I'm, no, I did not.
Okay. You voted for it?
I voted for it. I'm not, I'm not ashamed to say that.
Okay. There, there's the student fee bill. Are you going to support that?
Yes.
You are?
Yes, I am. And I have said any number of times, in fact, I said Tuesday night, that my, I paid, my parents paid the same, almost exactly the same dollar figure back in the, you know, long, dark, long ago, for me, that, and my, and my sisters and brother, as we're asking people to pay now. So, and we're the, one of the rare, one of the few school districts that doesn't have fees. Now, that's, to me, very different from the garbage.
Well, there are fees.
There are fees. That's right. There are fees.
And, you know, user fees are one thing. I understand students are using the school system, but, I mean, attending some type of school, and let's face it, most people aren't qualified to provide homeschooling for their children. So attending some kind of school is, is almost a requirement. Do you think that this is, apparently you don't think this is something that should be covered by our taxes?
If it were, that would be great. But because of the, because of the levy limits and the revenue limits, we can't, we can't possibly...
You're stuck with the same problem the city is. It's the same problem that the county is stuck with.
We're stuck with exactly the same problem. And we're trying to, we really need to, and I, and I understand why, we haven't, in Oshkosh, we haven't had school fees. We only had, we only had them, for the most part. We, now, there are some parents out there saying, absolutely not. I pay for this, 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 this. That's, that's true. But we haven't had a general textbook fee or school fee, in quotation marks, for more than one year, because it was in one year and then it was out next year. But I, I really believe that if we could, if we, if we could have the whole community support this through the, through the levy, that would be fine. But we can't, because there's, we're very limited by the state.
I understand.
And can't go over it. So it's, it's a real dilemma. And so I, I, I felt for the city with the garbage fee.
Yeah. You supported it.
I did. And my, and it, and I can tell you that we were split down the middle in my household on that one. So...
That's what rages sometimes happens.
That's true. That's true.
Do you have another kind of short question, by the way?
I'm worried about teacher shortages. What's the median age of, of the teacher in Oshkosh? Do you have any idea?
I don't know what the median age is. But we are facing numbers of retirements in the next few years. Absolutely. In terms of shortages, you won't see any shortages in certain areas, elementary, social science, maybe English. But you will see them, as has been the case for many years, in science, some science, some math, foreign languages, some of those things. So yeah, there's a, there's a problem in some cases.
Okay. We're almost out of time, Karen. Why don't you take a look into camera three and take about 30, 45 seconds, right straight ahead, and let folks know why they should vote for you on Tuesday, February 20th?
I would be very grateful if people would vote for me, because I think this district faces enormous challenges in the next couple of years. And my experience and my passion for kids, and my willingness to look at what's going on all over the district, all over the state, all over the nation, I think that makes me a good candidate. I think people would be wisely, wise to vote for me again. And I appreciate the votes in the past, too. That's been a very big part of my life, Oshkosh area school district. And thank you very much.
All right. And we've been putting your email address up on the screen.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
If you want to just say it for people.
Okay. It's kbowen, all one word, kbowen, at tds.net.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Well, thanks so much.
Thanks a lot.
And, you know, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If you make it through the primary, we'll have you back then.
Okay. All right. I'll be back.
For the second round. And we'll be back for the second round of this show in just a moment.
Thank you very much.
We'll be joined then by Michelle Monti. We'll be right back.
Good. Thanks, Karen.
Thanks. Thanks.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in forced labor camps.
If I stayed, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, you're dead. You speak German, you're dead.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing, no money, no English.
America stood for freedom, it stands for freedom, and that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-4-A-CHILD. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you and you have WIC.
Come back to the second half. We're joined now by Michelle Monte. Michelle ran for school board last year. I forget, what place did you come in last year?
Oh, I came in last.
Was it last?
Yeah. I thought it was a pretty good showing considering I'm completely unknown in this community.
Yeah, well, now you're running a second time around and you're not the unknown that you were back then. But for, for people who either, you know, are new to the community or, or maybe who don't remember what you're all about, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running again?
Well, I've been in Oshkosh for about four years with my family. We came to this community because my husband worked at Oshkosh Truck and we had some options of where to live anywhere from Fond du Lac to Appleton and we chose Oshkosh. We saw a lot of potential here. I was told the schools were excellent, which having four children is a primary focus for us. So, we moved to Oshkosh and a couple of years ago, I got spurred up into the political realm with the collaboration time and the calendar and it's kind of expanded from there to other issues and so, my primary focus is education and ensuring that my children get the best education possible and in turn, everyone else's children do.
Well, you know, you mentioned collaboration time and we appreciate your taking time out of your schedule to be here because I know campaign season is busy. You got into the race last year because of a problem, if you will, with the way things were being done in the district. And since then, you know, I will say you seem to have softened your approach somewhat about some things and you've also been very involved in the community response team. And, you know, has that changed your outlook at all on how the administration and the district operates as a whole? Or do you still have the same kinds of basic frustrations that you did a year ago?
A little bit, yes, a little bit, no. When, my approach has changed simply because I tend to react, especially when it comes to my children and the thought of them losing instructional time is very concerning and aggravating and I was very angry about it because it felt like no matter who came to the school board to discuss that issue, it was being ignored. Their concerns were being ignored, that's what it felt like and I reacted rather emotionally. And since then, I have taken the time to go to the meetings, to educate myself, to talk to people in the administration, in the school district, the teachers, the staff, parents of other schools and try and get as much information as I can so that I can calmly rationalize things and deal with them in a more appropriate manner. I don't have a lot of experience in public politics, so I react first and think about it later and now I've gotten to the point where a little more experience, I think first and give a reaction and always leave my options open to change my mind.
More people should do that, I think. The, probably the biggest issue that this district is facing right now, as we don't need to tell you, is the 10-year facilities plan. And that's, it's on the lips of everybody in the community. It is, as I mentioned during the last, during the last half hour, the centerpiece, I think, of this campaign for candidates. What are your thoughts of the plan as a whole? I mean, you've been very directly involved being a member of the community response team. What are your thoughts as a whole to the plan?
To the plan, I try and keep in mind it's a draft. It's a good start. We've, and I don't mean that the plan is a good start, I mean the process is a good start. We're finally moving forward, like we've said we're going to do for many years. And it's a matter of getting all of the information, make sure that all of the information is accurate. As a member of the community response team, our sole focus is to comment on what the administrative steering committee comes up with and our other focus is to go out into the community and draw in more input, more ideas, more comments, more opinions about specific buildings. And that's basically what I've been able to do and I've gotten to two or several of the schools, like Roosevelt was one I went through top to bottom, except the Boiler Room, there was some repairs going on there, and talked to the staff and custodians and gotten to see, yes, it's a zero rated school, but this is what it looks like. This is what they're doing for their children. And it kind of changes your perspective a little bit and I'm less likely to say, close all the zero schools because I'm wondering if maybe we can do better by some of those schools and make changes that make sense, both fiscally and geographically.
What about the recommendation to send the Sunset kids over to Reed and then make Tippler a full-time middle school again?
Now, I can only base my opinion on the information that I have today and what we had before us was that we do need Tippler. So, it makes sense to get Tippler from the zero rated school to as high as we can go within the means of our budget, but we need to do right by those kids as well. The Sunset students, it's been five years since their building was unfortunately closed. It would have been a better plan to transition them through attrition instead of taking more kindergarteners, to slowly close out the grades so that you don't have as much trauma to the families, having to figure out how they're going to arrange transportation and who the teachers are going to be because you really don't know once they go to Reed. It does make sense though, because some of those students won't be traveling as far, if not all of those students, won't be traveling as far to get to school in the morning. It's going to require the school district to communicate with the families and make sure that they have all of their concerns addressed, all of their questions are answered and that the transition is as smooth as possible, but it makes sense to do that.
Okay.
I want to go, one more question on Sunset. In the Northwestern, on Sunday, the 28th of January, it says that cost savings approved as part of the 2002, 2007, eight budget was the closing of elementary school. How can the school board come up with cost savings for a school that was closed five years ago?
I think they're focusing, part of that figure, to my knowledge, is they will be cutting some positions when they transfer those children to Reed. They'll be cutting some positions, but not laying off or firing. It's a matter of going through open positions and retirements and things like that and work your way down the system. That's the way it was explained to me when I asked.
It seems strange.
It does seem odd because there's no building. You're not saving on a building.
It's been sold.
Right. All we've gotten to this point is bits and pieces of the information. We have to, and even as a school board member, you have to trust that the information you're getting from your administrators is the right information. So, you know, there's that little bit of, I have to learn to trust that they're doing their job so that I can do mine.
Can I just follow up with one thing?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, yeah. Your show.
Well, it's everybody's show. You talked about information coming from the district and I just want to touch on that because communication has certainly been a big complaint of a lot of people in this district. And, you know, I think in the last couple of years, it has improved a lot. Probably still has a way to go, but what do you feel the communication is right now? Do you think it still needs to be improved and if so, how?
I think it has improved. I agree with you Cheryl. It is much easier to access information on the school district if you have internet or if you have cable or if you have, you know, available to listen to the radio when meetings are broadcast. And that's where I'd like to see some further improvement of getting the minutes and the notes from the meetings distributed to all of the schools, make sure that there are several copies in the public library at the university. There are students and non-traditional students interested in these goings-ons with the meetings and make sure we get to the senior center, even the churches, so that anyone who wants the information has as many available outlets to get it. Because not everybody has internet and that's our primary mode of communication right now.
I'll just make this suggestion and you can do with it what you want.
Okay.
Take it to whoever. I, I would say to summarize the minutes, you know, in layman's terms, minutes by themselves are boring and they're difficult to follow. And quite frankly, I mean, unless you're a member of the press or on one of these governing bodies, I don't think people really read minutes a whole lot. So, you know, I mean, I think somebody ought to be able to just kind of summarize what, what's been done at the meetings and, but I think that that's a very good idea. So, anyway, do what you will with my suggestion.
You know, that's an excellent idea and I might be able to take an example from some of the minutes from the township meetings, are very condensed. This was voted, that was voted, bottom line. So, that'd be a good thing to use as an example.
Sure. Yeah, but I do think it's good to get them out there to as many places as possible because that's one of the things we talked about with Karen is that people, unless they have kids in the district, don't really know what's going on unless there's a tax increase or a referendum coming down the pike. So, go ahead Dan.
What's the last book you've read for fun?
The last book I read for fun, Cesar Millan's Dog Whisperer.
Oh, okay.
That was the last book I read for fun. Well, it was for practical reasons as well.
I think school board candidates should be reading books, that's why I'm asking the question. I want to turn to personalities a little bit and I want to really be fair, but I want to push this and these are observations and if you think they're incorrect, please say so. I have an observation and a feeling, you're pretty good friends with Dan Becker. You went to his recount, you're by him at school board meetings and I also have a feeling that you don't like either Amy Winechine or Teresa Thiel.
Well, you're part right. I, I will admit on first, you know, you get your first impression of a person. I didn't like either one of them at first, they were very standoffish. I've been able to talk to Amy via email and in person a few times and it, it's a slow process because I think we both had the same opinion about each other. I'm very, I try to protect myself because you never know what anybody's thinking and that comes off as pretty bitter and angry and everything else. And I'm slowly trying to build that bridge with Amy because if I get elected to the school board, I would be working with Amy. I have been talking to Teresa at meetings before and sometimes after and when we're at functions, not so much like this because it's not a big crowd, but at the forums and we do talk and we have a lot in common. We're both very concerned about education and I admit, it wasn't like that at first. As far as my sitting with Dan at the recount, actually, Dan was one of the friendliest people when I started going to school board meetings. He was one of the friendliest people that approached me and wanted to hear what I had to say and that means a lot to me. And I was going to sit in the gallery where you were sitting and Dan invited me to his table. I was a candidate. I had an interest, not for Dan's sake, but for my own. I didn't appreciate seeing my votes getting tossed in the garbage can as much as anyone else would.
Were you there every day?
Uh, no, I couldn't be there every day.
What did you think of his conduct for the time that you were there?
Um, to be honest, I don't think it's appropriate to bash anybody like this. I mean, I, I would have done it differently is, is all I'm going to say. And, and I have talked to Dan and given Dan my opinion of his conduct and let him do with it what he will, but.
It was a long recount.
It was.
Very expensive.
It was expensive, it was stressful and, you know, there were a lot of things several people could have done differently. But, yeah, he knows my opinion and I think that's the most important thing.
Thank you for those answers, those are honest, yeah. Garbage fee, did you vote for that in November?
I voted.
Yeah.
I did not vote in favor of it.
All right, all right. Are you going to vote for the student fee bill if you're on the school board?
I think at this point, looking at the, the cuts that need to be made, the amount of money that needs to be generated, I don't think there's any choice for this year. I would like to take the next year to see if we can find a different way of doing it. I don't like seeing at-risk programs cut year after year and we've had that two years in a row. At-risk programs like VIP last year was cut, now it's completely gone with this budget reconciliation. Journeys is going to be cut. The teen parenting program was pared down to almost nothing. I don't like seeing that and I don't like fees, but my children attend these schools and I have, you know, I'll grudgingly pay them and I will vote for them unless somebody can help me find a way to find the money.
Well, see, and I appreciate your candor with that answer too, because that's exactly what the city council faced in that third quarter.
Exactly.
You know, they didn't have a choice either because they would have had to have laid a whole bunch of people off otherwise. So, I appreciate your honesty there. There's been talk of a referendum in the future, possibly as high as 50 to 60 million. You know, that's, that's a lot of money to ask this community to come up with. And yet, as, as Tony Palmieri said at the forum the other night, if you can make the case for certain things, you know, then it's a little bit more palatable. You know, what does candidate Michelle Monte feel about a referendum, first of all, and second of all, something that high?
Choke, cough, hack, that is a lot of money. I mean, that is more than half of the district's budget in a year. I, I have been told, because I keep pushing, we want exact numbers and there were things missing like the ADA and the environmental survey. So, we really didn't know what the total amount was going to be and I asked Shelley Music, can we have some kind of an idea? And she said they picked a number that was on the high side so that when they get the numbers in, they're hoping it comes below that. In addition, that number actually is supposed to drop as the cost-saving measures impact the budget. So, it should not be that high and regardless of what the amount is or what the referendum is for, I would have to agree with Tony. You have to make a case. Convince me that there is no other way and help me, you know, I would be asking the administration, help me convince the public that this is what we have to do for the good of our kids. We don't have a choice anymore or we're going to have to try and find some kind of a compromise. But communication is essential, as you said before, it's a cornerstone.
What, I mean, we've, we've heard that doing nothing with respect to this 10-year plan is, is not an option and I think doing nothing is always an option, albeit not a very good one, but it is an option. What about this matter of socioeconomics when we start looking at which schools to close and where to send the kids from those closed schools? Where do you feel socioeconomics should, should play a role here?
I think socioeconomics is important, but I have a complex, personal, I don't know, if it's attachment to the issue. Socioeconomics is actually a five-part definition. Only one part is the actual income of the family. Another part of that is the community resources. So, we may be able to, and that's where some people have suggested the city get involved and it may not be that the city needs to get involved, but be, make us more aware of the resources that are available to lower-income families. So, but the other attachment I had is five years ago, I was sitting in Manitowoc County Human Services applying for food stamps. I was skipping meals so my children could eat. I grew up on welfare. I got hand-me-downs from St. Vincent de Paul and Sheboygan and Goodwill. I still shop at Goodwill. It's a bad habit to break or a good habit, depending on how you look at it. But for me, I also graduated from high school with honors and I went to the rich kids' school and that wasn't important, my being poor, you know, it was important in that I couldn't afford guest jeans, but it didn't affect my grades because I knew that was the key to get me out. And that was what my parents taught me and my mother was college educated and my dad worked in a factory. But that was the key to get out was in education, that's what you strive for. So, for me, socioeconomics did not hold me back and it kind of bothers me when people say that coming from a low-income family, you're held back. I don't believe that to always be true. It can be, but not always. For those that, it does affect adversely, educationally, nutritionally, health-wise, whatever. The school district needs to do as much as they can within the realm of, you know, their limitations, legal or otherwise. And it should not be the driving force though. Right now, the driving force is the multimillion-dollar hole we've dug ourselves with the condition of our buildings. You can move kids wherever you want to move them, that doesn't improve the buildings. If the buildings aren't there, if the teachers aren't there, if the curriculum's not there, I believe that will have a tremendous impact on education, more so than what your dad makes in a year. And I think we should keep it in mind. I think we shouldn't make the problem worse, but that can't be our sole focus. We have to, I think to fix it, before we do anything that's directly linked to socioeconomics, I think the district needs to define it. Define what they mean by socioeconomics and then address it based on that definition.
You mentioned that you went to the rich kids' school and yet you were poor, but you graduated with honors. You did very well. Do you think that going to the rich kids' school helped you at all? I mean, being associated with other kids? Or did it not play a role in it for you?
Like I said, the only time it mattered is fashion and makeup. Yeah. That was the reality of it. What really mattered to me was the kids in my own grade, it seemed like, you know, you have a lot of immaturity, and you have a lot of this and a lot of that. I connected more with the upperclassmen. And I had a lot of friends my freshman year who were juniors and seniors. And then by my senior year, I had a lot of friends who were in college because we kept in touch. And I think that meant more to me because I could develop a relationship with my older peers, I could develop a relationship with my teachers. And that made the difference to me. I had very good teachers, I had a strong curriculum, and I loved education. Since I was nine years old, the only thing I wanted to do was be a teacher. I just loved education. And, you know, now I'm a mom, and my focus is on my children's education because someday I hope they can take care of me.
Okay, there you go.
Question, No Child Left Behind. I heard last night, and I didn't know that, you have a child that has autism.
Yes.
What do you think of No Child Left Behind's theme of how they treat kids with disabilities as far as testing is concerned?
Unfortunately, I think they're trying to create some kind of generic student. There, in some cases, and my daughter's a prime example, there are some things she's never going to be able to do. Spelling is one. Yet she's expected to be proficient in reading, which requires spelling and writing, on the standardized test. She uses a spell check. She will use a spell checker for the rest of her life. I don't think it's fair. I mean, it's an unfunded mandate to begin with. We are putting all these expectations on teachers, and ultimately, you end up teaching to the test, and you're still not reaching the kids. And I don't think that's fair. If you want to improve education, you have to find another way than creating the generic student. We're not all, we're not all the same. Your interests are different, Cheryl's are different, mine are different.
One other question. You're a keen follower of the school district, more than any other candidate. What's your sense of the privatization of planned services that Brad Kaufman started? Is it working? Are we getting our money out of it? Why are all the custodians upset with it?
My understanding from a few custodians I've talked to is they feel that their jobs are slowly being eliminated. And eventually, none of them will have jobs. And it's like they're being traded their technical expertise for 18-year-olds because they get paid less.
Sure.
On the other hand, it is supposed to be creating a savings. I'm not sure that it is. To be honest, I think our biggest waste of money right now is the $250,000 a year Sodexo contract.
That's what I was going to, yeah. That's what you're paying them per year.
Right. And I think that is a colossal waste of money because I've talked to and I've seen several people in the custodial department who have tremendous talents and abilities, who could be relied on for the exact same thing that Sodexo is doing, in my opinion, not very well.
Is this an annual contract you renew with them, or?
I really don't know.
Okay.
Well, speaking of contracts, you know, we're running short on time, but we've got time for a couple more questions, anyway. And as long as the word "contract" was brought up, let's get into teacher contracts. You know, we keep hearing about gold-plated benefits for, you know, city workers, teachers, what have you. Do you think that they have gold-plated benefits? And if so, what can you, if you're elected to the school board, do about it?
Well, that's one of the things you can imagine my husband and I talk about, since he's running for city council, and we disagree on. I was a teacher many years ago, before we found out my daughter had autism. And I thought the benefits were great. And I, you know, not having a lot of money, I thought it was wonderful if somebody else was paying my premiums. You know, that was great. I could afford the prescriptions that we needed in our family and going to the doctor. My kids could go to the doctor. That was a novelty. I don't think they're gold-plated. What I would like to see, and that would require communication with the respective unions, I would like to ask if maybe they'd meet us halfway. You know, we can't take something without giving something back. So we need to find out what we can give back, and in return, ask for, could you pick up a couple more percentage of your premiums? Just a little bit more. But reality is, if somebody wanted that kind of insurance, there are insurance companies out there where you can get that good of insurance. You'll pay for it.
Through the nose.
Through the nose. I mean, it is extraordinary insurance, but it's not any different than any other body of government. I think it sucks on the taxpayer's side of it because you're paying into somebody else's healthcare. And from a taxpayer's perspective, I think it's terrible that they don't have to pay more. But I think that's going to be some give and take involved with negotiations.
Okay.
How come we don't teach foreign language to kids in elementary school when almost every other country is teaching one or two or three languages?
I have no idea, and it's a travesty. My son was, my youngest son was at Cabrini last year for the four-year-old kindergarten. He was learning Spanish. And I, it's horribly disappointing now that he's at public school and the Spanish is going away. He's, you know, he's losing what gains he made. I think we do need to, unfortunately, I don't think we have the money to fund it right now. But I agree that that should be something that we need to figure out how to get it in there.
Higher priority, maybe?
Well, not higher than buildings or socioeconomics or academics, the core areas, but yeah.
Higher than extracurricular?
Yeah, I think it's a little bit higher than the chess club or debate or forensics, but yeah.
Ron Heilmann, our school superintendent. A lot of people have kind of used him as a punching bag for a variety of reasons. What is your impression of him? What's your opinion of the job he's doing? If you had to give him a grade, since we're talking about the school board here, what kind of a grade would you give our superintendent?
I'd give him a B. Maybe a B+.
Okay.
He's putting in a lot of effort, and I've gotten to see, since the long-range facilities process has begun, I've gotten to see some of the work that he's been doing. Before, hey, I was using him as a punching bag, too. I thought he didn't do anything because you don't see it. And when you get a little bit closer, you get to see more. You know, there's always room for improvement. But I'd say a solid B is a fair grade.
She'd take good class.
See, and I do think, I do think, Michelle, I have to say, that I do think that your service on this community response team has maybe opened your eyes to some of these things.
I'm a little more open-minded, I'll say that. I have some stubborn opinions, but I'm willing to listen, which is more than I was a year ago.
Of course, she goes to every school board meeting, she takes notes. I see her writing every school board meeting.
Very quickly, where do you stand on a 9, 10, 11, 12 high school?
Right now, I'm totally against it because I don't have enough information to convince anybody else in this community that it's a good idea.
It's a hard sell, isn't it?
It is a very hard sell. Personally, from what I've seen to this point, I wouldn't want my kids in a school system like that. Because I, and I, like I said, I don't have all the information.
Think that's facility-driven rather than education-driven?
I'm not sure. And personally, I believe it could be adverse to education. I think it could have a negative impact. But I don't have all the information either. But, yeah, if I had a vote today, I'd say no.
Okay, all right. Why don't you take about 45 seconds, look into camera three, and tell folks why they should vote for Michelle Monte on Tuesday, February 20th?
Well, my primary focus running for election this year is quality, efficiency, communication, and community. We need to move forward, we need to keep going, we need to progress. We're entering, we should have been entering a global economy quite some time ago. We need to push our children to be the best that they can be instead of lowering the bar when the dollar signs start flying. I would like to build a solid foundation for our school district, and I need your help to do that. So I would appreciate your vote on February 20th. Thank you.
All right. And thank you very much for being here. And if you make it through the primary, and I think you probably will, we'll see you again. And again, there's five candidates running. The first election, the primary election, is on February 20th. One will be eliminated, four will advance to the general election, which will be held on Tuesday, April 3rd. So, thanks very much for watching. Thanks to Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, good luck.
Thanks to Michelle and to Karen. And as always, thanks to you for letting us in your home for the last hour. We'll see you next time. Until then, take good care, keep your eye on us. We've got our eye on Oshkosh.